Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording, and Commissioner Teal is successfully online.
Okay, good. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today. We had a little bit of a delay this morning, and we do have a Commissioner that is under the weather, but I'm glad he's able to join us online. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite Pastor Darren Kessler to provide the invocation.
Let us pray. God, I thank you that these Commissioners and those present are asking for you to be present here, and I ask that you come and help with wisdom. Help guide in decisions that are being made, help as one interacts with one another and relate, and for wisdom in guiding this county. So we pray for your presence to be here with an attitude of love and care for those around. We thank you. We can pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for that. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if you'll all join, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. County Attorney's Office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great, thank you. And do any Commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No, sir.
No, sir.
And I have none. With that, we'll move on to Item 2, which is Ceremonies and Proclamations. Item 2A is a resolution proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have Nicole Adams, Assistant Director of Protection Programs from Human Services, presenting for staff. Nicole?
I'm going to turn it over to our Protection Program Manager, Julie Patel. Good afternoon. Whereas all Douglas County children deserve to grow in a safe and nurturing environment free from abuse and neglect, whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas Douglas County Human Services received 4,577 reports to its child abuse and neglect hotline in 2024, whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among Human Services, schools, mental health agencies, nonprofit and faith-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, and the business community along with parents, grandparents. And whereas families and public can report suspicions of child abuse and neglect by calling 303-663-6270 or 1-844-CO4KIDS. And whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without family or community resources and not knowing how to cope. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support and knowledge they need to raise their children in a healthy and loving environment. Whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents so that they can raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the Douglas, of the County of Douglas, Colorado hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Douglas County and urge all citizens to work together to address and significantly reduce child abuse and neglect now and in the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Nicole, anything additional?
No. Thank you.
Okay, great. Why don't you guys stay up here for a moment? I'll bring it back to the Board for any further comments or discussions around this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do know Commissioner Teal's online and under the weather today, but joins us nevertheless. And I just want to thank you so much for your presentation today. The work you put in day in and day out is incredible for our community, and I truly appreciate it. And I'm not sure if this would be the appropriate time for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, I'll accept a motion.
Okay. Well, therefore, I move to approve a resolution proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
And Commissioner Teal, if you can hear us, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. A second.
Okay. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I'll just add, first and foremost, thank you so much to you both and the entire Department of Human Services. It is truly tremendous, the work that you do. You know, we're the healthiest, most prosperous county in the state, and people don't often realize that in the state of Colorado, in Douglas County, we have families that struggle, we have kids that are facing some really horrific, challenging circumstances, and you all hear those cases every single day. And you are that individual that works with families to make sure that they can remain intact when that's possible and that you help kids when it's not. I know that as a board, we have been deeply involved with the state on the human trafficking front. We helped to pass, sponsor and pass House Bill 1371 around background checks at massage parlors for underage individuals that are being trafficked, and continue to work this year and hopefully beyond to make sure that there's felony penalties for Johns that are trafficking children in a state where you can get probation for trafficking a child. We are not casual here. I'm not a big fan of proclamations without any sort of action behind them, but rest assured, the county is actively working every day to protect young people. I often think about, you know, the work of From Silence to Saved, which is a nonprofit that is doing tremendous work in the state of Colorado to protect kids in particular that are being trafficked. And I'm always reminded of a video I saw at Cherry Hills Community Church that there are more human trafficking sites than there are Starbucks in the metro area. And I know Janelle has shared that her youngest client is a six-year-old boy. So that deeply pains us, and I think as a community, we mourn the challenges faced by young people. But I like that phrase from Mr. Rogers, you know, not to be too cute by half, but Mr. Rogers always used to say, "In the face of trauma and great travesty, look to the helpers." You know, there's so many more helpers doing good things, and you're a big part of that. So thank you for all you do. Commissioner Teal, anything further? You know, and you might be on mute, sir.
There.
There we go.
Or not.
George, for some reason, we're having a hard time hearing you. Maybe if IT can help out with his sound.
Commissioner Layden, it looks like he's switching from phone to computer. It might be just a moment.
Okay.
I do see him unmuted.
Okay. George, did you have any additional comments? He's trying to speak, and I'm not hearing anything, Troy.
Okay. I'll reach out to him. Thank you.
Okay. So we do have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move into our consent agenda. I'll first ask if there's any member of the public that has any comments for us with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Okay, not seeing anybody in the room. Is there anybody online with any comments for the Board?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do not have any online comment.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close. Citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, let's see if Commissioner Teal is with us. Audibly.
Commissioner Teal, how's it going?
Nope.
Looks like it's still muted from our perspective, Commissioner. Okay, he's saying, "We're going to pause." You know, I have to really acknowledge the hard work of our Commissioner colleague who is truly under the weather, but put on a suit and tie and is trying to work with us today in spite of really not feeling so great. So thank you, Commissioner, and we'll try to patch you in as technology allows. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I will move to approve the requests in all items A through U on the consent agenda.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that pending, okay. Commissioner Teal held up a two sign. I'm going to go ahead and accept that as a second because I saw and am acknowledging that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. There he is. Okay, I think we got a George there. So with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. The first agenda item is Item 4A, which is a construction contract with RME Limited LLC, Doing Business as Elite Surface Infrastructure for the Hilltop Road Improvements Project, Segment 1, for the amount of $14,435,665.80, Douglas County Project CI 2020-029. Benjamin Pierce, the Supervisor for Capital Improvements, presenting for staff. Hi, Benjamin.
So, as mentioned, I'm here today to talk to you about the construction contract with Elite Surface Infrastructure for our Hilltop Road project, and that project number is CI 2020-029. So a little bit about the project. You know, this package is kind of the first of three segments along the corridor, which will continue down Hilltop Road and then along Singing Hills Road. From Legend High School is about where the starting point is, moving southeast from there. And so this particular project is reconstruction of Hilltop Road from the high school through Village Road and Crestview Drive intersection, and that will be a four-lane roadway with concrete curb and gutter and a median. So it'll be two lanes in each direction, and then, where warranted, a center turn lane that folks can make a left turns from. And with this project, we'll also be installing a new storm sewer system with water quality And then, you know, the maiden intersection of this project is going to be a roundabout at Hillage, sorry, Hilltop Road and Village Road and Crestview Drive, and that replaces the existing two-way stop-controlled intersection. So, you know, we went through an extensive, you know, traffic engineering process early on to determine, you know, the different types of intersections that would work well here, and a roundabout, you know, showed as being the most effective, safest, and also, you know, very comparable price-wise because it doesn't require any signalization, whereas a standard intersection would over time. And one thing that we also took into account with the roundabout is, you know, out in a rural part of the county, there's lots of, you know, larger vehicles and horse trailers and things like that, so the geometry of the roundabout is designed to accommodate that. So it is going to be a little bit bigger roundabout than you'd see, say, here in Castle Rock or other more urban places around the county. So a little bit about the bid process. We elected to have two bid alternates for this project, so Schedule A and Schedule B. And the reason for that is this project would have worked well with either asphalt pavement or concrete pavement, and so we decided to bid it with both. And so each contractor would submit a price for both, and then, you know, we opened the bids from there and would decide between concrete or asphalt roadway. So they were, the bid documents were publicly advertised on Rocky Mountain BidNet in February 10th, 2025, and on March 11th, 2025, when we opened bids, there were six electronic bids that had been submitted. And so you can see down below here, there's the Schedule A. So these are the bids for asphalt from the six companies who proposed, and then on the right, you see Schedule B for concrete. Similarly, that is the six, you know, bids for concrete. So for Schedule A, our engineer's estimate was a little more than 21 and 1/2 million, and the bids came in much lower than that, which is great news. And the lowest bid for Schedule A asphalt was about 14.4 million. Compared with concrete, where the lowest bid was about $16.8 million. So there's definitely a little bit of a price difference there. So the reason we're recommending Schedule A, which is going to be Elite Surface Infrastructure, is, you know, for one thing, it was the overall lowest cost by about $2.4 million. So that presents a significant savings even with the different, you know, lifespan configurations with concrete versus asphalt. Roadway noise was another primary concern for residents along the corridor as we were doing, you know, public outreach and, you know, discussing with folks in the public. And the asphalt that we're using is going to have a top lift called SMA, so that's Stone Matrix asphalt. And part of that pavement, because it's more porous, it traps sound better. So it's about, you know, a lot of studies show about 15% quieter than regular hot-mix asphalt and a little bit more so even than concrete. So that was a big part of it. And then with the durability, so the Stone Matrix asphalt is a top lift, has a durability somewhere between that of standard hot-mix asphalt and concrete. So, you know, we send, we tend to get about 15 years of life out of the top mat with SMA as opposed to 10. And, you know, depending on where, truck traffic, all that kind of thing, you know, has a significant impact on that lifecycle. So staff recommends awarding construction contract to ESI for the following reasons: They were the apparent low bidder, both for Schedule A and overall. They're in good standing with the Secretary of State and CDOT pre-qualified, which is a requirement of our construction contracts here. And they have successful history working with CDOT, other local agencies, and Douglas County, you know, kind of throughout the whole metro region. And then a little bit about the, kind of the public information aspect of the project. You know, we'll be working together, so both the CIP team and our contractor with DC Public Affairs to make sure that we're fostering safe construction with proactive communication. So we'll be working with Caroline, Maisie, and her team to get all of these notices out on, you know, the pertinent social media and neighborhood websites. We'd be coordinating directly with first responders. In particular, on the north side of the project, in the Crestview neighborhood, they don't have a secondary emergency access, so their only point of access to the public road network is at Hilltop Road. So we'll be, you know, extra careful to make sure that there's always, you know, lanes open for emergency vehicles to service that neighborhood. And we'll be coordinating with adjacent landowners and HOAs. Again, on the south side, there's the Hidden Village HOA or Property Owners Association, which I've coordinated with throughout the project, and we'll be able to answer any kind of questions about traffic phasing or timelines. We will be keeping the project website updated with, you know, anticipated completion dates and major milestones. And of course, we'll be updating the county's cone zone report and county manager report to reflect progress as the project moves forward. So our schedule is to provide NTP to the contractor on April 16th for a contract length of 487 days, so that ends up being August 16th of 2025. The contractor may complete sooner than that. That's just they have to be done by that final date. And, you know, we anticipate a winter shutdown likely from the dates between November 15th and March 15th, just because there's not a whole lot of construction activities necessarily that can be done during that time. And then for funding, the contract amount, proposed contract amount is $14,435,665.80. And funds are set aside for this construction contract, $13 million from Fund 235, Business Unit 80514, and the remaining, about 1.4 million from Fund 230, Business Unit 80156. So with that, staff recommendation is to approve the construction contract to Elite Surface Infrastructure for the Hilltop Road project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Well, Benjamin, thank you for that presentation. Let me ask if the Board has any questions for staff.
I do not have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. Commissioner Teal, any questions for staff?
No, Chair. This is one we've been going back and forth on for, I feel like, my whole time on the Board. It's good that we're friendly, able to get it on the schedule and get it moving.
Yep, I would agree with that. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go online. Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
No further discussion from me, Mr. Chair. Therefore, I move a construction contract with RME Limited LLC, Doing Business as Elite Surface Infrastructure for Hilltop Road Improvement Project, Segment 1, for the amount of $14, 435,665.80, Douglas County Project Number CI 2020-029.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have a first on the floor. Is there a second?
As I said in my prior comment, when I talked about not having any questions, Commissioner, this one we've been working on, trying to get on the calendar, trying to get on the budget for several years now. It's good to see you, and so with that, I do second for approval.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion. George, I hear, there we go. I heard three motions for, or three sounds of aye, so that will be approved unanimously. With that, we'll move on to Item B in our regular agenda, which is a public contract for services with several vendors for the 2025 Aviation Wildland Fire Support. Thomas Kenny, Emergency Service Manager, presenting for staff.
Thomas Kenny, Emergency Management Staff, presenting regular agenda, Item B, Public Contract Services for the 2025 Aviation Wildland Fire Support. Faced with a potentially challenging fire season in addition to the threat of limited aerial resources in the region, Douglas County Office of Emergency Management is requesting approval for call when needed contracts for service with several aerial fire suppression vendors. This year, we are seeking public service contracts with 10 tanker, air carrier, Helicast International, and Trans-Aero Limited. Each contract includes a maximum expenditure of $100,000. However, no payments are guaranteed unless services are rendered. The contracts provide access to additional air support only when needed, saving money and improving efficiency. These contracts align with Douglas County's philosophy of hard, heavy, fast fire suppression and doing everything we can as local government to provide public safety for our residents. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
No questions from me, Mr. Chair. It's one of our most important priorities.
Commissioner Teal?
Likewise, no questions. We've been briefed on this, so I'm ready to proceed.
I would echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think first and foremost, Thomas, we are incredibly lucky to have you and your colleagues. I was recently at a metro area County Commissioners meeting where, as a group in Douglas County, we really tried to encourage other counties throughout the metro area to have a dedicated helitack team. And many don't know that we are the only county in the state of Colorado to have a dedicated helitack team. The statistics continue to improve. The last I heard, it was about 34 wildfires that you all have put out, 10 of which are out of county, that the state reimburses us for. So now it's almost revenue generating in terms of the work you're doing. And, you know, our Commissioner colleagues from Jefferson, Arapahoe, Denver, Boulder, other areas, we have repeatedly asked, "Please, think about a helitack program for your county. Your local fire department does not do that." The response was, somewhat surprisingly, "Thanks." They are very appreciative of the work you've done, particularly in Jefferson County, which is, I mean, every square mile is like ours, about $150 million in property values. So my thanks to you, my thanks to our citizens for investing in wildfire mitigation and helitack support. It has really become a metro area leader and a statewide leader in fire suppression. I think the reason I am so encouraged by this is that any one of those 34 fires could have been catastrophic, and it's the good news you'll never hear about. You know, we hear about the Haymans, we hear about the Marshals. You're not going to hear about these fires because you all are the heroes that put them out. So thank you so much for getting this before us, and thank you to our amazing and dedicated staff that made all this happen. Certainly appreciate that. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am. I think we know who you are, but if you'd like to state your name and where you're from for the record?
I say our firefighters and our police department, our aerial people in the air, Navy, the many, many men and women standing together right now in our nation, defending democracy all over the world, if it exists in some places. But today, I am so grateful because I watched those fires, I smelled the fires. I live in Highlands Ranch, and what heroes like to be aware even, to know and to act. And I think I applaud also the Commissioners here to act upon the fire mitigation and the drought we are facing, the incredible drought as we renew water and not replace it. What a tragedy for the men who, and also a triumph for the men who win the fire war, I say, because it is real. The fire war is real. So thank you, men who have courage and determination and the physical strength to fight for our people and defend our properties and lands as we face a very tough summer. I watched and I heard and I saw the news that day when they protected Lockheed Martin, the water system, that the bears, the men fought bears and snakes, burnt land right 15 miles as it could have jumped Deer Creek and destroyed the entire Lockheed water system if that is true. I donated some money right July 4th as, when I moved in, all I smelled with my shifted 25-year apartment or town home at Carlisle, all I smelled was fires, and I couldn't believe, like, why do I always smell fires? Are we roasting marshmallows or are we burning land and structures? So it felt that way. But as we watch the courage in all of us, each one, whatever we stand for, that the preparation as an economic war, the biggest we've ever faced, and I'm sorry for the losses in the market, that was tragic, and it is tragic. I saw that coming two years prior. Thank God for a nation that stands despite and has courage and the women and the men standing together. And I pray to a holy God for this nation, that to me, I don't recognize the state of Colorado. I was on Broadway at a bus stop and how I lost my, I mean, I closed my bank, I'm moving to another state. And so I closed my bank account, and I had no access to Uber, and I was taking the bus. And I stood outside a sports bar where I walked to from the bank that I closed my account. And on that bus stop was a man who couldn't even respond, maybe drugged so bad that, you know, sat with all his goods, comfy on the bus stop. Another woman dancing in the streets on Broadway, a busy street, and another possibly on drugs as well. And then another, a strong man that I looked into the eyes of, a man that probably served wars in Iraq and hates the housing, the wood around him, and a strong man that served the people, like, looked so valiant to me, like, how could you live on the streets? And yes, it's easy to do, they're very good people, but this man was prepared.
And Ms. Campbell, I appreciate your comments if you can wrap up for us.
The craziness is real, and what Trump's doing, thank you for supporting him.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Any additional citizen comment? Welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners and everybody in the room and online. My name is Carson Baumann. I'm a resident of Perry Park. I applaud the effort firefighters are doing to, you know, if there is a fire, to actually put this out as fast as possible in order to prevent any kind of devastating losses of life, loss of properties, and so forth. One thing I do want to say is, like, what is the best version of fighting a fire? It's preventing a fire from happening in the first place, right? So I guess everybody would agree with that. That's why we do educational events and so forth. So in this regard, you know, I want to urge everyone to continue to support, and if a fire does come up, we can actually put it out as quickly as possible, and at the same time, prevent any fires and fire hazards to happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the room. Anybody online with any citizen comment?
Thank you, sir. I have no.
Discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, if you please, the Board, I do have a motion to approve a public contract for services with several vendors for the 2025 Aviation Wildland Fire Support.
And I will second that motion, Mr. Chair. There's very few things that we do that will be more important than this effort.
I agree with that, colleagues. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So with that, we'll move on to Item C, and that is the adoption of Ordinance Number O-025-001, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinance and resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof on first reading. We have Commander Alan Stanton presenting for staff. Hi, Commander.
Commissioners, thank you for having us today. I also have Sergeant Trace Warwick from our traffic unit that's here today. I would, again, in fact, to thank you for giving us time today. I would again, in fact, to thank you for giving us time today to talk about an ordinance change. What we're looking for today is an adoption of ordinance number O-025-001, again, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict thereof, and providing penalties for violation thereof, first reading. In addition, the adoption of this ordinance, we're looking to incorporate new provisions in this ordinance that deal specifically with commercial vehicles and recreational. Now, for the board, we have actually presented two options, one, commercial by itself in a section, and then one of the ordinances, it has both commercial and recreational. So the board can look at both of those as proposals and see what best fits for the county. The sheriff's office, some historical information for the public, but also for the board, which is knowledgeable of. Back in 2022, HOAs had rights or regulation to regulate parking within residential areas, and it dealt with anything from recreational vehicles to commercial vehicles. But in 2022, the legislature in Colorado changed that, and they actually removed that regulation that the HOAs had and put that to no regulation. And what's happened over the timeframe is that we are seeing over the years, safety issues that have been happening in our communities. And what I mean by that is, commercial vehicles, vehicles that are 10,001 pounds, we're talking semi tractor trailer trucks, trailers parking in residential areas. Clearly, safety issues for the community. And so the sheriff's office and commissioners, we've been working together with the community to look for ways to maybe combat this. Again, we always look for voluntary compliance when it comes to citizens and violations, but there are times that charging somebody with a penalty assessment or going to court has to be put in play to solve that issue. So just some circumstances that are actually with this to kind of give an idea under the commercial on that section. So under the commercial, it reads as, within areas designated by the Douglas County Master Plan, right now, there's been specifically nine areas in Douglas County that have been chosen off of complaints and issues that have occurred within the last two or three years. That is in Exhibit C, it's attached to this, and I'll discuss that. But it talks about highly urbanized residential areas. So it's not going to be the rural areas that you see, maybe down south, that individuals have room or property where they park these commercial vehicles, recreational vehicles on their property. These are areas that are highly densely populated, such as Highlands Ranch, for an example, where we don't want semi tractor trailer trucks parking in residential areas. People can't see around them, we have pedestrians, we have children. One of the things I think Douglas County Sheriff's Office has seen a lot within the last year are auto pedestrian accidents, and we want to prevent those. So with that, this commercial vehicle reads as such, it's the highly urbanized parking of commercial vehicles on residential streets, that that creates a safety and traffic hazard to other residents who live, park, and travel on those residential streets. It blocks access, creates undue noise, increases air pollution, obstructs views, and in general, detracts from the residential character of the residential neighborhoods. If this is adopted, it's going to protect resident safety, the safety of children, other pedestrians in the residential neighborhood, and also promoting peace and welfare of the residents that live in those communities. And that's kind of the basis of the commercial. And again, it's set under Exhibit C, which I'll discuss. Violations for that, just so the public know and commissioners know, we are looking at a tiered approach. So a commercial vehicle, there are some exemptions, but a vehicle that would be a semi tractor trailer that decides to park in a neighborhood, the first violation would be a $100 fine, the second violation would be a $100 fine, and also applicable fees and surcharges. That goes through three violations, so you get three separate occurrences. On the fourth, it's a mandatory court appearance. The sheriff's office has a strong stance that voluntary compliance is what we're looking for. We'd like to talk with that owner and say, hey, please move your semi tractor trailer truck to a proper area, and then it's solved. But if they decide they don't want to, we would actually increase that to a monetary or penalty assessment. On the fourth violation, that would actually go to a mandatory court appearance. And on that, like I said, a judge could find up to $1,000 court costs and fees. So give you an example of that. The exemptions that we have under the commercial vehicle section, there are times that vehicles should be able to park in the residential area. We have some exceptions to the rule on that. If a, an example, a moving truck that's loading or unloading in your area, that's actually working in the area, that's okay. Critical service repair, like electric, water, sewer, if they're in your area, there's an exemption on that. The other exemption is if you're a tow truck driver and you are in contract with a law enforcement entity and you're on call. It's important that those tow truck companies are able to get to areas within a quick fashion if they're needed, and so there is an exemption for that. That is the commercial section. I'll jump to the recreational section that's listed in the ordinance. This deals with, within areas designated as during the Douglas County Master Plan, is highly urbanized. From time to time, there is a need to temporarily park recreational vehicles and the like on public streets by their house. A balance must be struck between this need and the rights of other residents for their, the resident's enjoyment and property. And again, it's striking that nice balance. We understand that people have their RVs and they have their recreational vehicles, their boats and trailers, but it's within reason that they're not there 365 days. What we have found is that residents now, because it costs to store those vehicles, they now park them in front of their house for the whole year, which causes safety issues within those communities. And so as part of this resolution, that would actually, it's based off a 72 hours or anything longer than 72 hours when you park that vehicle there, it would be in violation, again, voluntary compliance, and that's within a seven-day period. And that goes on a fee schedule. So the first violation would be $25, second would be 50, third would be $100. And again, we hope we get voluntary compliance, but again, if someone doesn't want to move their vehicle, then that would apply. That all falls under Exhibit D, and the reason that they are separated, there are areas within the county that are different. And so up in the northern corridor or middle part of the county, a lot of highly densely populated residential areas. If you're down south, that's not the case. And so there is a distinction of what is allowed in different areas, and that's actually attached in the exhibits. And again, there are nine that are currently listed under the commercial, and there are three that are listed under the recreational. Commissioners, have any questions?
Commander, thank you for that presentation. Board, any questions for the commander?
Mr. Chair, no questions from me. This is one of those issues that even while running for office before joining the board, I heard often from the people, specifically of Highlands Ranch and now Sterling Ranch, but the folks of Highlands Ranch have lived in a certain way of parking their cars and parking their RVs, and they're not used to seeing a keen super semi parked on their street for overnight or even days on end. So when that happens and they realize that it was a state law that changed it, it was again, one, another example of the unintended consequences of a legislative measure that wasn't fully vetted or thought through. And now the people here in Douglas County are having to deal with the fallout from that. So I very much appreciate our sheriff's office responding those requests and bringing the solution to us, the Board of County Commissioners, to essentially bring us back to the way Highlands Ranch had operated for 40 years. I don't think anything here will be much of a surprise for the people, at least in my district of Highlands Ranch and Sterling Ranch. And so I very much appreciate the hard and thoughtful work that our sheriff's office and especially our local communities, such as Highlands Ranch, has put into it.
Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal.
No questions.
Okay. Well, I would just echo my commissioner colleague's sentiments, so thankful for the work of law enforcement in keeping everybody safe on the roads. This was a lot of work, and you came in many times and spoke with the board and really helped identify a series of updates that I think will keep people even safer. So thank you for that. We have a couple of motions. We'll take them both up at the same time, but before I do so, I will ask for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to these items? Yes, sir. You're not a stranger to us either.
Commissioners, my name is Mike Bailey, and I'm here today representing the Highlands Ranch Community Association. As you know, HRCA has long supported reasonable enforcement of parking regulations on public streets and right of ways. While we understand and respect the intent of the past legislation, we've also witnessed firsthand the consequences of said legislation and that shift within our community. Since the passage of legislation, we've heard from many residents, your constituents, expressing concern over the lack of enforceable standards for vehicles parked on public right of ways. The absence of these regulations present unsafe and often unsightly conditions along our streets, conditions that impact not only the overall appearance and feel of our neighborhoods, but also have a measurable influence on home resale values. For those noted reasons, we are in favor of Douglas County's proposed ordinance to reintroduce parking restrictions within the noted unincorporated areas, including Highlands Ranch. We appreciate that Douglas County is currently evaluating the broader impacts of past legislation, and we welcome continued collaboration as the process unfolds. Thank you for seeking to uphold the standards and make Highlands Ranch a desirable place to live, and for your continued to work on behalf of all residents of Douglas County. Thank you.
Well, Mike, thank you. And before you sit down, we really want to thank you on behalf of the county. We can't think of a stronger partner, a greater example of a great collaborator than you and your team at HRCA. It's really been tremendous to be able to have good conversations on how to make our community even better. So thank you for being here with us, and I know more good things to come.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the kind words.
Absolutely. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, not seeing anybody in the room. Is there anyone online with citizen comment with regard to this item?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for two motions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And before that, just on the tail of the witness testimony we did hear from Highlands Ranch, could you outline what these resolutions, what they apply to which communities and what communities they do not?
Absolutely. So for the commercial vehicles, it actually applies to nine areas. Now, one thing I didn't point out, which I should, is that if there's an area within the county that actually were having some of these problems that aren't listed now, they can always approach the sheriff's office and the commissioners, and that can be added at a later date. So this isn't a one and done list. We tried to look at the circumstances that needed to be best, and that's what was listed right now. So for the commercial vehicles, it's the primary urban area, Highlands Ranch. It's the Chatfield urban area, and that's going to be Sterling Ranch, Roxborough SUA, Pioneery SUA, Castle Pines SUA, Parker Municipal Planning Area, including Stone Gate, Castle Rock Municipal Planning Area, Lone Tree Municipal Planning Area. That's going to be for the commercial. For the recreational, there are only three at this point that are listed. That's the primary urban area of Highlands Ranch, the Chatfield urban area, and the Parker Municipality Planning Area, including Stone Gate.
Okay. Well, I certainly do appreciate that clarification. Thank you so very much. Mr. Chair, perhaps I could proceed with the, actually, two separate motions. This first will apply to the oversized vehicles, and therefore, I move to approve an amendment adoption, actually, Commissioner Teal, do you have these motions in front of you?
I do. Do you need me to help out with this, Commissioner?
Perhaps you make the first one with the oversized vehicles, and then I can just tag team with the second one.
I wonder if we could flip that, if you could take the first one.
Okay, of course. And therefore, Mr. Chair, to be overly clear, I move to approve an amendment adoption of ordinance number 0025-001, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof, to provide greater regulation of oversized vehicles on first reading.
Thank you, Commissioner. And this one's a tricky one. Did you mean 0-025 or O-025?
O-025.
Okay, thank you. So we have a, thank you very much. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Colleagues, I have expressed my grave misgivings about the county regulating parking. Of course, Commissioner Van Winkle and I have had the opportunity to speak on how this is a pressing concern in his area. We did hear from Mr. Bailey to talk to us about the opinions of Highlands Ranch. And I do understand that with the state's actions that they chose to take last year, you know, a significant piece of the puzzle was removed from these HOAs. I still have great misgivings, and I, yet at the same token, I do believe the people do deserve a vote, and therefore, I will second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, and that passes two to one. Do we have an additional motion?
I do have, for the next motion, I would be happy to introduce it. Again, I do believe the people deserve a vote, and so if it please the board, I do have a motion to approve an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof.
And Commissioners, just as a matter of clarity, there was a typo in the original motions log that was handed to you, and Commissioner Teal, I apologize, I handed the two commissioners that were here a corrected motion. The distinction is that the second motion is to regulate or make the correction regarding recreational vehicles.
And thank you, counsel. Commissioner, do you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Friendly would be acceptable, Commissioner, although a substitute motion, if the correct language could be invoked, would be welcome as well.
Okay. We do have that in front of us. I might ask Commissioner Van Winkle to state that motion.
Yes, and so, Mr. Chair, I move a substitute motion to approve an amendment adoption of ordinance number zero, I'm sorry, O-025-001, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof, and provide greater regulation of recreational vehicles on first reading.
Well, I absolutely appreciate the help of county council and my colleagues on this one while I'm under the weather. And once again, I state my grave misgivings, particularly for this motion, when it comes to recreational vehicles. If there's a place in our community where recreational vehicles should be allowed, I do believe it is the unincorporated communities. If people wish to live in areas where recreational vehicles can be banned or controlled, it is my stipulation that then they should incorporate or move to those incorporated areas and leave the unincorporated, unincorporated areas without these sort of regulations. Yet, I do believe that the people deserve a vote on this, and I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I do know that so much of this hard work is the result of some state legislation that was fairly one size fits all, that makes it very difficult for this board. So I greatly respect the positions of both of my colleagues. Commander, I think you're doing the best you can, based upon the new legislation, to try to be in conformity with the wishes of our citizens, so I will be in support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
And we have, and one opposed, so that passes two to one. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to item 4D, which is the Heroes Hall Lease. Very exciting conversation. We'll invite Jeff Garcia, our county attorney, to present for staff.
Yes, Commissioner, I appreciate the invite. I have to say that I'm probably not the person who should be speaking about this. This is really Commissioner Teal's great project, and he has invited several members of the community, including members of the board, to discuss it. I will say that the introduction of this is that the idea is to provide better veteran services in the community, and I would invite Commissioner Teal or his guests to better speak about this.
Thank you so much, counsel, and I would agree with that. This is a really tremendous leadership role and commissioner-directed initiative that Commissioner Teal has led on and led well. Commissioner, would you like to share any comments with us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Obvious that there is a measure of how poorly I felt when waking up this morning and being led low by this cold, it's the fact that I am not there in person to usher in this decision. This was a goal very early on, coming onto the board in 2021, that I did feel like there was a role for the county in providing a home for our veterans community. Our veterans community here in the county has struggled to find actual home, a brick and mortar place to call our own, much like other communities with their own DFW or American Legion Halls. We have a vibrant community here in Douglas County, and we have a vibrant veterans community here in Douglas County. There are more veterans per capita in Douglas County than in any other county in the state of Colorado. of Colorado. And I believe the time is now to take this action. And so, what is the Veterans Hall? Well, the Veterans Hall is going to be owned and operated under the Veterans Hall Foundation. We have a $15 million project before us, and to hear a little bit more about that, I believe, and Chair, if I may refer to the county manager, did we have a video prepared to show everyone?
I believe so, and we've got Carolyn Frizzell at the podium, prepared to present that. Carolyn?
I've been asked many times what I miss about being in the military. It is the camaraderie, the friendships.
In the Army, you phone to each other.
You have to take it serious when you've got your life and somebody else to worry about.
You form a bond, a bond that can't be broken.
There's always a certain connection.
It's almost as tight as a family, and then you leave the military, and that bond is suddenly broken.
You can find yourself all alone.
Our veterans are suffering.
Veterans don't want to admit they really do need help.
You can't see it. It's always something that's hidden.
I came here today because my husband would have told me to come, even though he's passed. He would have told me to come for all the other veterans that are out there.
It can be a tough time.
We've got to take care of each other, otherwise, we will be lost. I always look out for a veteran if I can.
I think the Heroes Hall is going to be a great opportunity for the veterans in Douglas County.
We need a place to meet, to gather, to support each other.
Yes, I think our veterans need a lot more than people realize.
Veterans can come in, their families can come in. We have camaraderie, we have somebody to listen to you, somebody to help you find jobs, or help, or whatever a veteran needs.
We're going to house the county veteran service offices, but also the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Douglas County Monument Foundation.
This could be a way to kind of unify all of these different groups into one big umbrella, and kind of bring everyone together.
It's going to be a nice 14,000-square-foot facility.
It's going to be a building that we're building at the county fairgrounds. It is integrated into the fairgrounds' master plan.
I say a little prayer every time I go by there, thanking the county for giving us that land.
Our intent is to take the start that we've gotten from the county and to build on that with private donations to raise $15 million here in the community. Your support will make this vision, this dream, a reality.
Remember our past. Remember our sacrifices that the men and women of this country have given to make it great.
It's not easy to talk to just your average, everyday citizen and explain what you did and why you did it.
Having a Heroes Hall and people donating money would help a lot of veterans, definitely.
I'll turn it back to Commissioner Teal.
Well, the most part about having a cold is that you just wipe your eyes because of the cold. I trust this is a project that my colleagues and the community as a whole believes is worthy of our support. Before you, colleagues, is the lease agreement whereby the Heroes Hall that you saw the elementary designs for will be built upon. If it pleases the board, I then ask to turn it over to some of my colleagues on the Heroes Hall Foundation Board to say any other words prior to public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any additional Commissioner comment?
No, Mr. Chair. I'd like to hear from our honored guest today.
I would too. With that, I'd like to open it up for any public comment. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I'm Mike McNary. I'm from Sedalia. I'm also the chairman of the Heroes Hall Foundation, along with some of my board members and some of my American Legion brothers and sisters. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Teal, for letting us come and talk about this, sign this lease. Appreciate all the work that Jeff Garcia and your staff has done to help us get here. This is a phenomenal project. We are so excited to bring all of our veterans to one area. It's kind of one-stop shopping for veterans and their families, and allows us to not only bring them together and help them out for those who need that help, or camaraderie, or whatever it is they're coming for, but also provides that opportunity for trans immigrants coming through, people who are going to another state, might need a little help, we can help them along the way. It's also going to give us some forward-facing opportunities for the community. We can invite our community partners in and say, hey, take a look, see what it is we're doing here, and see what our veterans are all about and what we're here for. It's a very emotional project that we've been on for quite a while, probably more than five years, have been working with George, with Commissioner Teal, to try and get this project going, and this is really a fantastic step, and we really appreciate everything you've done. We appreciate the city and what they're helping us out with, and of course, we're on a big campaign to make money, as you can see, and of course, we're going to show that. If it makes everybody cry like George, then we're good, right? So, anybody have anything to say?
Thank you, Mike. Welcome. We know you.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the board, Mike McNary is the director of the board, and Commissioner Teal is the vice chair. We do have an executive board. We have many hard-working team members on this board to make this vision a reality. We're meeting every month. We are fundraising for Heroes Hall Foundation. We're meeting with donors, and we are in the process of working with architects, and so, this lease today, this is very exciting for us, to be able to bring this vision to a reality for the community. This will enable all our services to have a home in this building, to be able to rent this outbuilding, to be able to bring in community groups, to learn about veterans in the community. This is a uniting force for the 20-plus-thousand veterans we have in Douglas County, and so, this board is extremely grateful for all of you supporting Heroes Hall Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Any additional comment?
I'd just like to acknowledge my team, and they do a phenomenal job. I'm merely humbled by the amount of talent that I have with us, and these guys are going to do, and gals are going to do everything they can to make this go as quickly as possible to get us up and supporting our veterans. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything you've done for us. We really appreciate it.
And, George, I might be in the same spot. I don't have a cold. I want to pause because, you know, you really should not be thanking us. At the end of the day, it is a tremendous honor as Commissioners to be able to endeavor with you in this incredibly important project. Mike, I thank you for your leadership. Laura, I thank you for your leadership, all of you. Larry, I mean, the video speaks for itself, and, you know, obviously, Chris, what you do for veteran services is just tremendous, but there is no greater calling for us as a county than to recognize those who have sacrificed all for our country. None of us would be here. We would not be in these positions, leading a free county, if it weren't for your dedication and your service and your sacrifice. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to even hear this today. And that comment really goes to you, George. Having a veteran as a colleague and as a Commissioner, leading this community, I will tell you, seven years in, this is what Commissioner work looks like. We have good days and tough days, but ultimately, you've got to choose the big rocks that are important to you, and this was your big rock. You've had several. We've got another one we're working on of yours right now, but you are leading this so well. So, thank you for bringing this forward to us, for us to consider, and I'm looking forward to the discussion. Anything further, Commissioner?
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity to comment, and it is, and this is one of the more tremendous honorable things I've had the chance to experience while being on the county commission. This is a project, I believe, started by Commissioner Teal, probably before he was even a Commissioner, and to be able to come on board and have it be one of the first motions made as a Commissioner is a tremendous honor, but really, the credit goes to those who came before me, and that includes all of you up here today, and especially Commissioner Teal and Commissioner Layden also, for allowing it to go forward at a time where a lot of things weren't moving forward with the county. So, with that just said, I am in your debt, and the county is in your debt, has tremendous amount of gratitude for each and every veteran in Douglas County, and this is the least we can do for our heroes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll continue to open it up for any additional citizen comment, either in the room or online. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, not seeing anyone else in the room. Anybody else online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, we're going to, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion. And I think, George, we would like to have you do this motion, if that's okay.
Well, in that case, it seems that the board will be pleased. Therefore, I do have a motion to approve the Heroes Hall lease as presented.
It's an honor to second the motion.
So, we have a first and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Congratulations. Appreciate you all. So, with that, we'll move on to item E, which is a resolution opposing Colorado Senate Bill 2025-003. I know we're running a bit over, but we'll do our best to keep it at a pretty quick clip. We do have Jeff Garcia presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. I believe Commissioner Van Winkle will be reading this one.
Great. Commissioner Van Winkle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our staff in preparing this hastily for this meeting. I do think it is important, and I will just read the resolution so that everyone knows exactly what we're voting on and what it says. This is a resolution opposing Colorado Senate Bill, Colorado Senate Bill 253. Whereas on March 28th, 2025, the Colorado General Assembly passed Senate Bill 3, which prohibits the manufacture, distribution, transfer, sale, and purchase of nearly all firearms in Colorado, Senate Bill 253 is currently awaiting Governor Jared Polis's signature. Whereas Senate Bill 3 violates the United States citizens and Colorado residents' Second Amendment rights that states the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Whereas Senate Bill 3 violates the United States citizens and Colorado residents' Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights by depriving gun owners of the right to sell and transfer their property. Whereas Senate Bill 3 unfairly and without cost targets an industry of, an industry of American firearm manufacturers and a community of lawful Colorado gun owners and enthusiasts with burdensome regulations and additional costs. Whereas Colorado government faces a $1.3 billion deficit, Senate Bill 3 requires Colorado taxpayers to incur millions of reoccurring costs for administratively and enforcement expenses. Whereas Senate Bill 3 requires Colorado law enforcement, including the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, to become administrative agencies of the bill, verifying state records, performing background checks, and fingerprinting lawful gun owners. Senate Bill 3 provides no additional staff or funds to state law enforcement agencies to perform these administrative tasks. Instead, Colorado sheriff's departments are required to reduce their functions to compensate for the additional work, including direct active law enforcement. Whereas Senate Bill 3 fails in its purpose, while lawful gun owners will be burdened with unnecessary costs, training, and processes, criminals, and those who seek to own firearms illegally will continue to break the law, included those laws created by Senate Bill 3. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners opposes Senate Bill 3 as unconstitutional, unlawful, unnecessary, burdensome, and dangerous to Colorado, and we urge Governor Jared Polis to uphold the Constitution and veto Senate Bill 3.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. Any comment or question from the board?
I have no comments, and, excuse me, I have no questions.
No questions. Probably a couple of comments. Commissioner Van Winkle, any further comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could just confer with our legal, our county attorney, for one moment.
Absolutely. Would you like us to recess, or would you like? Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the pause there. I actually read just the very last line the way it was intended to be, and not a bit that was in there. So, the way I read it is accurate. We are urging the veto of Senate Bill 3.
Well, thank you for that correction, Commissioner, and I think that's the value of having a former state senator as our current county commissioner, so thank you for that check. Any further comments or discussion with regard to this item?
No, sir.
Okay, I do have some comments as well, but I'll share those following citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am. Welcome, and if you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record.
My name is Julie Ord. I'm from Highlands Ranch, and I'm here because I just have some concerns and genuine questions about the intent of this resolution. It appears that the resolution came out with little to no public notice or solicitation of comments, unless it was possibly discussed at the recently disclosed private meeting of Parker conservatives that we now know was in violation of open meeting laws. I don't believe that the resolution has written properly characterizes the intent of this law. It doesn't mention the Heller decision in some of the comments that are on there. So, my question is this to you: Do you write these resolutions for every state law that you dislike? Or was the purpose of this resolution, which comes with no detailed action listed, more a political statement to the 2A supporters you have in Douglas County? If you opposed SB 3, did you testify, did any of you testify in person, on behalf of yourself or in your capacity as county commissioners, at the public hearings, which would have allowed the legislators to question you about those concerns? I was at both the Senate and the House hearings, and I did not see any of you there, but please correct me if I'm wrong. Despite the fact that there were other commissioners who did appear from other counties, would that have not been a better place for you to express your concerns, rather than this resolution? Or does this resolution serve as some other purpose? The Denver Post quotes Commissioner Teal as stating, in reference to the equally rushed without public comment or feedback proposal for home rule, that, quote, "When we get gun control laws that come down, we're going to have latitude." However, I am certain that you know, as well as I do, that the Colorado Supreme Court affirmed that home rule does not allow county commissioners to opt out or disregard state laws, including gun laws. And yet, we are seeing 2A supporters in the county reporting that they believe home rule will enable this. Do you have any plans to correct this misperception? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
So, I turned like 380 degrees on this because I do believe we should veto this bill, that we should be able to have firearms, and at first, you know, I told even one of the police officers, when he came to my home one time, he had young children, and I gave him, you know, a floating colorful ball that I played in the pool, like with my kids kind of thing, or got it, you know, CVS or whatever, and I said, trade the ball, the colorful ball, for your gun. And now, as I have faced my own challenges, my house broken in, raped in my home by a black firefighter, and all the other things, I stood for the Venezuelans and had to flee to another state so I'd get a fair trial, and cost my alimony and a car accident, and not a friend in Douglas County has ever called me. The Christian The Christian church kicked me out because I had too many police records, as I haven't seen my daughter in five years, and I still bear it because I chose to start over. And whatever the cost is when America is starting over, this is the cost. This is the cost that has invaded our country of illegal immigrants and the face of men who have to fight gross crimes and lose their lives and their families, and mine as well. I haven't spoken to any family for four years. My children don't even send mothers to take care for what they've done to me in my Christian church. Christian, I hardly find these men Christian that I stand in Highlands Ranch with. If they can tear down just a community or just one person, a woman, with the challenges I face to start over, and I'm leaving the state of Colorado, thank God I am, and not because it's not good. I have many, many friends here. It's a beautiful place to live. But I want life, and I want freedom, and I don't find it here for me. But we have faced massive challenges. And if you are so, not if you are so, we are so comfortable with our lifestyle that we hardly turn our heads when a noise, you know, something happens. We don't look at humanity. We look at broken computers and sirens, and we hear things that we don't ever even respond to. Thank God for the CTR responders, because most of us don't respond to damn thing. We don't care about humanity as much as I thought, I thought we did. It's a false fabrication to me of Christianity and a nation that is under God, indivisible, for justice and liberty for all. I'm free of all charges. Thank God I fired my lawyer and rehired him because I slandered his name that they slandered my name, and both of us won a victory. Let's all win a victory for each other. This nation is facing a C-I-V-I-L war. And so, thank God, we don't veto this Jared Polis shush, poor thing, that we can hold guns and defend our neighbor. We have the right to bear arms. Veto this.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment in the room? Okay, I'm gonna go online and ask if there's any citizen comment online.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve a resolution opposing Senate Bill 3.
Mr. Chair, I actually did not testify in the state legislature, mostly because I did not believe the majority would bother listening to a representative of our community. I did not believe that the representatives and the senators who voted this bill through actually care about the opinions of Douglas County. And therefore, I did not take that time to answer the resident's question. I am very much in favor of this resolution and going straight to Governor Polis, who's the next decision point, and asking him to veto, because I do believe, as the resolution stated, this is a law that for those who commit crimes with semi-automatic weapons, with detachable magazines, it is yet another law that they will disregard. And the only people who will be penalized for this law will be the law-abiding gun owners of the state of Colorado. And so, I second approval of this resolution.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. Any further discussion from the board? I'll just add that certainly appreciate all of the citizen comment. You know, from my perspective, this is such a bipartisan, universal issue of the fundamental right to defend yourself. And not everyone likes the current president. And I know some of those folks might be in this room. I invite you to imagine a scenario where, like in other countries, when you speak out against the leadership, you're executed, or you're not allowed to speak. Or suddenly, you have folks marching down your streets, commanding you to stay in your homes. Those are times when I think you want all of your neighbors to be armed, to be able to defend themselves, for free citizens to have that bulwark against tyranny, no matter where it may come from. So I'm very much in support of the Second Amendment and any encroachment upon those rights of free citizens to defend themselves. So I certainly will be in support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that.
Aye.
Great, and that motion carries unanimously 3-0. So with that, we'll go into citizen comment. We are a half an hour late to get into land use, but I know we started late. So if it's okay with the board, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear from our citizens. We'll give it about 15 minutes. But if there is any citizen comment, at this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Any disruptive behavior, such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt this meeting, may result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak today. My name is Emily Suyat, and I live in Parker. On April 4th, our local paper published a story with the headline, "Douglas County Commissioners Discuss Home Rule With Group Out of Public Eye." Despite transparency law, all three took part in a gathering where public and press were excluded. So I know, we all know about the open meetings law here in Douglas County. Our Board of Education paid $103,000 in attorney's fees and costs because a judge ruled that the Board of Education broke the open meeting law. So I read this story. I'm going to assume the best here, that what your spokesperson said is true, that you were all invited individually, so the meeting was not properly publicized to the public. And I'm also going to assume that you talked about home rule, because that was not disputed by your spokesperson. What concerns me is that when all three of you showed up to the meeting, no one said, "Oh, wow, there are three of us here. We need to make sure this meeting is open, or we can't be here." If you had done this, I would assume that the spokesperson would have said so. So you, as commissioners, you either weren't aware of the open meeting law, which is ridiculous. I know you know what the open meeting law is. Or it seems to me that you don't care. Either way, it shows a lack of judgment. You've been criticized for not being open about the decision to become a home rule county and the $500,000 special election that goes along with it. You did this all without public comment or input. You're being careless with sunshine laws, and therefore, you're being careless with taxpayer money. You can say all day that you are committed to transparency, but these words are empty when you don't have the action to back it up. You claim to care about local control, but you don't care about local input.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, sir. Welcome, and if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Yeah. Lloyd Guthrie, I live out in Roxborough. I'm going to speak to sort of the same issue, and that's about your obligation for transparency and following the law. You know, on the first page, the homepage of the Douglas County website, there's a comment or a statement that says, "Citizen engagement is the heartbeat of effective county government." I didn't put that there. I think you did. There's another message in, on another page, that says, "A message from Douglas County Commissioners. As the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, we believe that open and transparent government requires that the business of county government should be open to effective public review. This includes access to information, as well as the knowledge of the ability to participate in public discussion." You also have a county commissioner's manual. I'll point to Section 2.3, Commissioner's Code of Conduct. The Board of County Commissioners commits itself to ethical, businesslike, and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum when acting as the Board. The Board acknowledges it has fiduciary and ethical responsibilities to the public. Each commissioner shall fulfill his duties, unconflicted by loyalties to staff, other organizations, including interest or advocacy groups, and any personal interests as a consumer. Each commissioner must avoid breaching his or her fiduciary responsibility and the public trust. And then finally, the commissioners themselves have the primary responsibility to ensure that ethical standards are understood and met, and that the public can continue to have confidence in the integrity of local government. And so, I wanted to give you some feedback from people out in the community. I'm retired. I have a lot of time to have breakfast, lunch, and dinner with people in the community. Here's what I'm hearing. They believe that you strayed from your ethical and fiduciary responsibilities related to the discussion of home rule. You've surrounded yourselves with a group of aligned individuals and entities, many of whom have financial interests and matters before you. And then finally, you conduct business in the shade. That's what your constituents are saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am. And ma'am, if you want to just follow this gentleman.
Commissioners, thank you. My name's Gary Wood from Perry Park. I want to commend you on passing today's resolution about fire suppression. And I am glad that there's a helicopter. I just don't want to ever see it over Sandstone Ranch open space, and I surely don't want to see it over my house. I have a couple of different questions for the several of you. Has the commissioners received the staff report on camping on Sandstone Ranch? If so, what did they recommend? I'm also interested in the idea that Sandstone Ranch and other open spaces are underutilized. Perhaps you all don't recognize it, but this weekend, there's a hike at Sandstone Ranch, and it's completely sold out well before the event. There will be a lot of people enjoying that beautiful place. Commissioner Layden, in an article in a Gazette out of Colorado Springs on March 24th, you stated that you would oppose anything that increased fire risk in Douglas County open spaces. The Larksburg Fire Department has presented you all with a resolution that says they're opposed to this, just as you guys made a resolution against the state law 23. Do you presume to have better expertise about fire risks than the Larksburg Fire Department? If you do, how? Because they said this is a bad idea, and I think you all need to take a look at that. Commissioner Teal, in terms, we've heard several different references just today, in terms of transparency. On numerous occasions, I and others of us have asked you specifically, how many people came to you to request access for camping? We know that the previous survey, nobody bothered to do that. Would you kindly tell us how many, and maybe when? Commissioner Van Winkle, you have said on several different occasions that you have no questions about this because there's no plan. There is a proposal, sir, and those words are interchangeable. I don't understand why you would want to behave like Mayor Bass out of LA and not ask questions about something that puts my life, my property, my friends and neighbors' property and well-being at risk. No camping on Sandstone, no camping on county open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
I would back up that for sure. No fire right now, and we don't have enough water to even drink hardly. That would not be a good thing for the human being, would it? I back him up. So as we've heard some voices from, about our local government, our commissioners, and I just want to read what was on the face of the Douglas County page about this very issue. And so, it says, why they are presenting, I don't think they passed this, correct? You have not passed this home rule, or is that how you say it? But really, in all essence, Denver has changed, and we've supported 42,000 immigrants. The Denver General Hospital has collapsed. I had to drive up to Boulder just to get an appointment. A doctor's office gave me cancer on my leg, which I paid $38,000 for. So we're a little collapsed in this nation. If you don't know it, you haven't gone out of Douglas County very often. I do. So here, I'm gonna read local issues. This is the front page, with these great people standing in front, governing of the people, by the people, for the people. Our great Abe Lincoln spoke that. So it says, "Local issues, local voices, local governance. Mask mandates, bag fees, overturned property tax reductions, and sanctuary community policies. What do these topics all have in common? Their state sanctions imposed on local governments." We're a local government. Jefferson County is a local government. Denver is a local government, and on and on. Harappa County. As Douglas County continues to grow and evolve, a great place to live, the second best in the nation, if you read the reports. The need for a more responsive and adaptable governance structure that has some freedom from state policies is becoming increasingly clear. Today, March 25th, your Board of Douglas County Commissioners adopted a resolution to transition from a statutory form of government to a home rule county charter, representing a significant opportunity for residents to enhance local governance. So let me tell you about non-local governance, like Aurora, that I fed people, and I stood by people that were jailed, thousands of people. I helped on those streets during the last four years. The craziness and the outlaw, the people weren't lawless. There was no law to govern people. In hospitals, I called the police five times for UC Health. I have survived the unsurvivable. Thank God for that man with the badge on his. Those were my friends in Douglas County. As a single woman with lots of money, I don't have that anymore. Thank God, I don't want the money. It's the gold that Rome fell for, and America's about the same, isn't it? We watch the market all red. All red. If you haven't pulled your money out, you won't get it out. We have no liquidity. So let's stand for what we built here, and I'm leaving it, but we still built it here. And we have land, and property, and people, and children. And what are we fighting for? And so, I would say amen to these men who are standing in the front of the biggest war our nation has fought. We'll fight 104% taxes on China, Trump imposed. Amen to whatever you want. Apple phones will be $2,700.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, and thank you for the citizen comment in the room. We are about 45 minutes overdue to get into other citizens' land use items. I will extend it further for anybody online. Do we have any online citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I do have one online comment that will be from Priscilla. Priscilla, you're unmuted. Go ahead. Priscilla, you're unmuted. I see that you're muted on your end. I'm unmuting you again. Yep, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. This is Priscilla Ron. I live in Highlands Ranch. I just wanted to take a moment to address a really serious issue that happened in early February with the shooting at the main event. And I first want to say deep condolences and prayers to the family of Jaylen. I can't imagine the heartbreak of losing a son. I also, I don't know who the deputy was involved in the unfortunate fatal decision, but my prayers go out to our sheriff's deputy as well. I wanted to share that, just as a citizen who's lived in Douglas County for over 10 years, I'm sorry, let me, I don't know if I can turn on my camera. I didn't realize my camera wasn't on. Camera will not work for attendees. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. But can you still hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll just continue. I have had the pleasure of getting to know our sheriff, Sheriff Weekly, on a personal level, as well as our DA, George Brockler. I know them personally, and I know that they are men who are fair, they are thoughtful, they are kind, but they're also serious individuals. And Douglas County has a reputation of being a law and order county. order county. And we are an open county. For those who can't see me, I want folks to know that I am an African-American who lives in Douglas County. Not that it matters, but, um, I've just heard people say, like, "We're not an open, welcoming county." And I strongly disagree because if you love freedom, if you love low taxes, if you love great schools, small government, um, public safety, then Douglas County is a place for everybody. And I know I speak for a lot of citizens. We want to live in a county where we're safe, where our kids and families can go and enjoy a good, fun night out at Main Event, or go to a restaurant. And I do expect our Sheriff's Department to keep us safe. We have, um, the A-Team in Douglas County. We have one of the best departments in the nation right here. And so, once again, I, I do want to extend my condolences for the family. Jalen should be alive today. I, I agree. And at the same time, two things can be true. We have great deputies that we support and, um, appreciate. And so I would just encourage the, um, county commissioners to continue to support our Sheriff's Department and, um, make sure that they have all the funding that they need so they can continue to train, um, our law enforcement officers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ron. Um, so with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for, Ms. Ron, for, um, taking time out of her day to, to testify today. I agree wholeheartedly with her statements, and I really appreciate her, um, thoughtful attitude towards this very difficult situation facing our community. Um, with that said, there was, um, I don't know if I just addressed them, kind of going in back order. The Sandstone Ranch, it's not that I don't want to learn about it or listen to it. I, I really actually have appreciated listening to the many constituents from, uh, the Perry Park area and around Sandstone. Um, very much appreciate, uh, their outpouring of, um, of their thoughts. And, um, it's not that I don't want to, to listen to the, the proposed plan. It's just I've just, I've been here almost five months now, and there's, no plan has been really proposed or moved forward at all. And I don't think there will be one for some time, perhaps never for the Sandstone Ranch area. Um, but in my time here, it's just, it's not something that has gotten from the staff level up into us here at the Commissioners' dais or upstairs. And so, um, if that were to happen, then I think a lot more questions would be asked, and there'd be many more steps to happen between that and actually camping on Sandstone Ranch. Um, but, and then, uh, to the notion that we held a, a meeting out of public eye, I think, uh, some folks have been misled by a member of the press that didn't do the due diligence of, or perhaps even tried to show up at the meeting herself because the meeting, it was posted on our county website the day before. Um, and not one person was turned away. We ensured, um, that not one person could be turned away, even if that was a member of the press. There were over 100 people down, uh, at the event venue that we were at, which, if you've been there, there's a bar in the middle, and there's kind of a room on the left and a room on the right. There were over 100 people there, and it's all one big room that you can hear each other. About 70 of the people were there, um, listening and interacting and talking to us commissioners, as we heard feedback from the community. And about 20 people were actually hosting a Parker, uh, poker tournament on the other side of the bar that had nothing to do with us. And about 10 or 15 people were just regular members of the public at the bar itself, just having a drink in a beer, um, that had absolutely nothing to do with us. So clearly, it was an open venue, an open meeting. Not one person was turned away. And we have been working very diligently. We've accepted, I believe, every request for, um, a member of the public, a group, big or small, to come speak to them. We held the press conference just over there two weeks ago. We begged the press to come to that. And since then, we, each one of us have been holding interviews with the press and talking to members of the public about the home rule process. And ultimately, the decision isn't even up to us. It's up to the members of the public that get not one, but two member chances to vote on the proposal. So I just wanted to clear the air a little bit that we held a closed-door meeting. Uh, I don't believe that to be true, given, like I just laid out the point, that there were about 30% of the people down there had absolutely nothing to do with our meeting and actually probably couldn't have cared less. They were playing poker and drinking beer, and, uh, we just happened to be there at the same time. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I sure appreciate all the public testimony. I certainly appreciate the public taking time out of their day to come talk to us. And even if it's not under these circumstances, on a Tuesday afternoon, uh, we commissioners, at least, um, I guess I should speak for myself, am always available to speak to members of the public. And if it's a church group, if it's a, a group on the left, group on the right, I try to do everything possible to accept those invitations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna keep my comments brief, um, uh, you know, to, to Mr. Guthrie and to the folks who, um, have concerns about, um, the introduction of home rule. Here's the good news. Um, you know, the, the home rule has to have a vote of the people. And as, as Commissioner Van Winkle said, it's not just one vote, it's two. Um, uh, the, the people of Douglas County will get the final say on anything dealing with home rule. And so, um, and as a guy who campaigned on it, that home rule was a direction we should be going back in 2020, and then again last year, um, I, I guess, uh, I, I mean, I, I want to be sympathetic to folks who may have misgivings about home rule. Um, it is, it is my goal to do everything I can to be a part of the process, to shape a home rule charter that we can all support come this November. And I do look forward to a vigorous conversation, which actually, that's all we did when we began the home rule process, was we began the conversation. So for anyone who feels like they were left out of any part of the conversation, the conversation's only just started. There's no reason to feel left out of anything. And it's a conversation that by Colorado law, by the Colorado State Constitution, we will all have an opportunity to participate in and be a part of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. You know, I, I again want to thank all of the citizens for coming today, both in person and online. I think regardless of where you're at, those, those comments are, are actually deeply valued, and the quotes we have in this room are legitimate. We work for you, not the other way around. Um, you know, I, I again want to reiterate that we had a very large public meeting on the 25th of March where we passed a resolution related to home rule, and everyone was invited. We also had a very large public press conference where we went through chapter and verse, um, specifically what the state statute requires. Uh, again, to Commissioner Van Winkle's point, um, the meetings we've gone to have been posted and open to the public. Uh, we get invited to go all over the place all the time, and we will do that and continue to take questions and educate and be open to whatever comments are provided from the public. I would agree that, um, again, not only are we following this by statute, but it is a long 243-day process whereby any day, any hour, any minute, you can provide comment by email, in person, in public. Uh, and it'll be a long year, with two elections where the public will literally have an opportunity to vote, not once, but, but two times. Um, so thank you for continuing to be engaged. I think it is a really significant question. Um, for me, it's just boils down to local control. I'm a big fan of local control, and I think, um, you as Douglas County citizens are best able to navigate your futures than anybody else. So I hope that continues to be the case. Um, I do want to make a, a comment. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Ron ringing in, um, certainly from her lived-in experience as a, as an African-American. And I also want to begin by acknowledging the loss of life. Uh, you know, as a board, we, we mourn any loss of life in our community and continue to pray for families who deal with the unimaginable loss of a child. We have a family that lost a child in our community. They're people of color, and we have recognized them. Uh, with a street name and their son's honor, Kendrick Castillo Way is a street in Highlands Ranch dedicated to the young, young man who lost his life. You know, we know the District Attorney's Office has conducted a meticulous review, and DA Brokler's decision does reflect a commitment to justice and transparency. "The decision by the District Attorney highlights the importance of understanding the realities of law enforcement and the challenges our deputies face while serving and protecting our community. We commend his dedication to ensuring that all facts were considered before reaching a conclusion." And we know it wasn't an easy one. "Our deputies are on the front lines, often in high-stakes situations where they must make split-second decisions to protect themselves and the public. The men and women in law enforcement put their lives on the line for our safety, and they deserve our support and understanding as they navigate these incredibly challenging scenarios every day. Commissioners stand firmly behind our deputies and remain committed to ensuring their safety and effectiveness as they protect the residents of Douglas County. We will continue to support initiatives that enhance public safety and strengthen the bonds between our law enforcement and the community, no matter where you're from or what your background is." "Our commitment to public safety is not merely a promise. It is a responsibility we embrace wholeheartedly. Together, we will ensure that Douglas County remains an amazing home for all Colorado families, where safety is not just a goal, but a shared reality. We stand united in this mission, honoring those who serve and safeguarding the safety and security of all of our, our citizens. We do extend our heartfelt appreciation to the dedicated men and women in our public safety departments. These brave individuals undergo rigorous training and willingly put their lives on the line every day, embodying the spirit of service and sacrifice. Their courage and commitment to protecting our community are nothing short of inspiring. We stand firmly behind them, recognizing the challenges they face and the sacrifices they make to keep us safe." With that, I'll ask for any other comments from the board. Okay, with that, we'll move on to other business. Any other business before the board today? Okay, seeing none. Uh, turning to our county manager. Anything from our county manager? Okay. And the county manager report is detailed and, uh, open to the public to review. Uh, lots of great detail about the county. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Well said, Mr. Chairman. Ditto.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Commissioner Teal. Hope you get better soon. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned.